Thank you guys for coming tonight. We'll start out with the local.
Mayor Nicholson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Durst.
Here.
Espinoza.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wells.
Here.
Okay, we do have a forum tonight. The first thing is on our public hearing. Item A is an ordinance amending Rollins Municipal Code Title 19 Zone. Is there anybody there to speak on that? Okay. Then we'll move on down to item three, citizens' participation. And this is time for anybody to come forward and speak for five minutes on something that is not on tonight's agenda. Louis, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to bring something up. A friend of mine has a body shop here, Jack's Body Shop, and they accumulate a lot of cardboard. And they went up to the recycling center to drop it off, but it wasn't open. So they went down to the landfill to dispose of it, and they wanted them to put it in a trailer, you know, it has that little slot to put in there. But the amount of cardboard that they accumulated was way too much for that trailer. So I guess they dumped it because they charged them twelve dollars just for taking that cardboard. But if the recycling centers closed and some of these businesses, like say possibly Rasmussen's or different businesses that
Hello.
run a lot of cardboard, aren't able to throw it, it kind of discourages them. Maybe at the recycling center they have a larger container for disposing of that cardboard, or have a larger container out at the landfill where the weather won't get to it, where they could dispose of it without being charged.
Okay. All right, we'll talk with Dustin about that. Have him look into that.
Yeah, and possibly give him back his twelve dollars, you know, I mean, I don't know.
I have the same problem. I've got a, the back of my storage is full of cardboard for exactly the same reason.
Right.
It's difficult to put in a container, but you can't drop it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we could get an hour a day with a container out front or something that you could just go, I don't know. I think Dustin, agree.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on anything? Okay, then we will move on down to some proclamations. The first proclamation is sexual assault awareness month. Whereas sexual violence is a devastating and intolerable crime affecting men, women, and children of all race, age, culture, economic situations, and abilities. And whereas the National Violence Against Women Prevention Center estimates that one of five adult women, Wyoming women, have been forcibly raped at least once in their lifetime. And whereas sexual violence seriously affects our youth, with one out of every three girls and one out of every six boys being assaulted before the age of eighteen. And whereas continued commitment is needed to ensure that all victims and survivors of sexual violence are treated with the dignity and respect they deserve, and afforded the support they need to heal. And whereas to prevent future violations of our citizens, it is important that we foster greater public awareness of the causes and effects of sexual violence, and commit to addressing this problem on every civic level. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own. All must work together in eliminating And whereas Carbon County Pro repress public support and assistance as it works toward a society where all people can live in peace, free from violence and exploitation. And whereas the vision of ending sexual violence can be a reality. Now therefore, I, Stephen S. Nicholson, Mayor of Rollins, hereby proclaim the month of April 11th as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Now move on down to another proclamation we have, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Now therefore, I, Stephen S. Nicholson, Mayor of Rollins, hereby proclaim the month of April 11th as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Okay. Now move on down to another proclamation we have, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Mayor's proclamation, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens through telephone, rollins, police-fire communication center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Rollins Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in this past year. And now therefore, I, Stephen S. Nicholson, Mayor of City of Rollins, hereby proclaim the week of April 12th through the 18th, 2020, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Now move on down to another proclamation of national crime victims' rights week. Whereas America has joined together annually each April for National Crime Victims Rights Week, which was first declared in 1981 by President Ronald Reagan to focus the attention of our nation on the rights of all crime victims. And whereas we must remain united in our commitment to ensure that victims of all crimes and survivors are treated with compassion, respect, and sensitivity, and be recognized as key participants within our system of justice, and afford the services that provide them with the hope and self-confidence. And whereas by promoting victims' rights and honoring crime victims, and those who advocate on their behalf, we focus on the issue of trauma experienced by victims of crimes and the services available to support them, and provide an opportunity to strive to achieve the ideals of this year's theme. Seek justice, ensure victims' rights, inspire hope. Now therefore, the result, and I, Stephen S. Nicholson, Mayor of the City of Rollins, hereby proclaim the week of April 19th through April 25th, 2020, as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Now move on down to another proclamation, National Volunteer Week. Whereas downtown Rollins and our community are blessed by ninety active volunteers who logged three thousand six hundred and four volunteer hours in 2019. And whereas those volunteers dedicated their time to improving the heart of our community through beautification, economic development, and marketing. And whereas National Volunteer Week on April 19th through April 25th, 2020, is celebrated throughout the nation to focus national, state, and local attention on the vital role of citizens serving as volunteers and being an integral part of the fabric of our community. And whereas the volunteer sector is increasingly recognized as a third partner with the government and businesses in building strong communities. And whereas the city of Rollins wishes to recognize those men, women, young adults, and children who have given their time and talents to our community through Rollins DVA slash Main Street. Now therefore, I, Stephen S. Nicholson, Mayor of the City of Rollins, hereby proclaim the week of April 19th through April 25th, 2020, as National Volunteer Week. All right. Now we'll move on down to item A, the employee of the first quarter 2020.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, if I could come up and join me. For the first quarter of 2020, you don't have to stand that close. Is Allen Robinson. I'll read the letter, so you have a little background on all of this, but the letter reads, Dear Allen, congratulations. You have been selected employee of the first quarter 2020, and are being recognized for going above and beyond the call of duty as liaison between the local, assistance state team, and the much-needed support of the family members upon the passing of paramedic Michael Wilder in the line of duty. You provided invaluable assistance to Mike's family in the planning and coordinating of funeral activities, obtaining health counseling for family and department colleagues as needed, and in the preparation of local, state, and federal benefits claims. The family's wishes in honoring a fallen brother who suffered an in-the-line-of-duty death were conveyed to you in your actions to make their worst days a little brighter at the cost of spending time with your own family have not gone unnoticed. Your sacrifices have made the city, the emergency services departments, and our community proud. Thank you for your commitment to emergency services and making our community better through your generosity and caring for mankind. Allen Robinson. I wouldn't shake your hand, but it ain't happening.
Thank you, Allen. Okay, now we'll move on down to the minutes. The first one is to approve the minutes of March 17th, 2020, regular meeting. Can we get a motion for that?
I'll move.
Okay, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Linda Smith made the first motion, segment by Councilman Sanger. Do we have any objections to the motion that was made? If not, Martha would you open her mind, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yays, and Councilmember Espinoza abstaining.
Move on down to item D, approve the minutes of March 20th, March 20th, for special meeting. Have you a motion for that? Councilman Espinoza.
Make a motion to move to approve the special meeting minutes of March 20th, 2020, as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Louis Espinoza made the first, and Councilman Wells the second. Any objections to the motion that was made? Martha would you open her mind, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yays.
Now move on down to item C, approve the minutes of April 2nd, 2020, special meeting. Have you a motion? Councilwoman Smith made the first.
Second.
Councilman Durst made the second. Any objections in that motion? Martha would you open online voting for that one, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yays.
Thank you, Martha. Now move on down to five, item A, financial report. Anybody have anything, any questions, or anything they want to add to that? Okay. We'll move on down to the approval of tonight's agenda.
Mayor. I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Second. Councilman DeBary Martinez was second on that. Do we have any?
Good discussion.
Discussion, turn to that motion. Okay. Martha would you open her mind, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yays.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on down to unfinished business, item A, an ordinance, third and final reading, amending Rollins Municipal Code Title 19 Zone.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Durst.
Move to approve on third and final reading with the reading of the ordinance amending Rollins Municipal Code Title 19 Zone.
Can you do a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Sanger, a second? Danielle.
I am just here if you guys have any questions. There's been no changes from the second reading, so everything we went over in pretty great detail, but if you have questions, let me know.
I'm good with it, I just feel like we should wrench it because you put so much effort into it, I feel like it shouldn't ever come to fruition.
If you guys don't pass this, I literally might cry right here. Don't do that to me.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Martinez, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would like to, if it's proper at this time, I would like to make an amendment to Section 1924.050, accessory buildings under letter N. I would like to remove, and I'll read it to you, and then I'll tell you what I want to remove. It says, if a lot is sold with an accessory building, a primary residential structure shall be built on the, on the lot within six months, or the, or the lot shall be adjacent to a commonly owned lot, and the subject, and subject to, and then it goes on. But the part that I want to remove is the six months. I, I don't think that six months is a long enough time. I would, I would, I would be willing to amend it so that it reads twelve months rather than six months.
Okay.
I'll second his amendment.
Okay, so we have a first and a second for that amendment. Do we have any discussion on that?
So this is, this is going back to the, if you build a garage before the residence, correct? That was, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't come up on the thing fast enough, but that's, that's what this is about, is that correct, DeBary?
That's right. That's right. If a person was to build a garage, they have six months to, to build a house. But my thinking was that six months is not enough time, for one, and for two, the, the point being that they have to get a permit for that garage, and in that permit, it also says that they have to have plans for a house, and, and show that there's a plan for a house before they're allowed to build the garage anyway. So my thinking was that six months is just not a lot, enough time.
Mayor.
So, DeBary?
Yes.
So you'd have to amend your motion to cover all the residential
Zones.
Zones. So it'd be the, it'd be the 19.23 through 19.28. So that it would be changed down.
That's fine, we can do that if we had, we can do that if we had to. I thought everything was fine because last meeting I brought up something and I, and it didn't pass, and that's fine there. But in reading this, in continuing reading this, I just thought that if we get away with Section N, which says, or talks about six months. But if we have to do the whole thing, that's fine too. That, that would be my, that would be my motion to amend.
So it's just Section N in each of those. So, and it was same thing that we kind of discussed at the last meeting, is 1923 through 1928, they are all the residential zones, but all of those sections have that letter N stating the six months. So I just want to make sure again to be clear that we would amend it to be twelve months for all residential zones.
I would second your revised amendment.
Okay.
And then I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilman Wells, or Smith, sorry.
Now, maybe I lose my train of thought. I just had a little nagging question in the back of my mind, and it's probably a very silly question. What if you have a property that has an out building on it, and let's say that they've had a modular mobile on it, and you take that building off? That, there's no requirement for someone to put a building back on that property, is, is there?
So they would have to still comply with the current zone, so they'd have to, again, they'd have that same requirement, the six or twelve months to put the home back.
An existing property that had a structure on it, and they removed the structure, then they're going to have to put something back?
Right, because it's still no longer, the use was residential, so they can't change it to something else, even if they removed that.
So I'm thinking of abandoned properties where the owners go off out of town to live, and it becomes dilapidated, and we have to remove a house, or they need to do that, and they do that, then their, their hands are tied, I think. So I, that's the only thing that's nagging me about doing any of this, really.
Right, unless they moved, removed the garage with it, but I do, what you're saying does make sense, I get that completely. I mean, and I think that would be our recommendation. As staff, we would just say, hey, if you're going to tear the house down and you're not building, then we would just say you take everything down.
Like sometimes they built a house after, let's say it's twenty or thirty years apart, and the garage is still great, but the house isn't.
Right.
There, I would not want to tie the hands of the folks who are cleaning up their properties in that way. So I just don't know what to do with that.
But they, so they, but if they were, if there was a lot on the side of a lot, they wouldn't be, it wouldn't matter, because they could leave the garage up by itself anyway. Otherwise, if it's their primary lot, why would they tear a house down and then not rebuild it?
Because it's dilapidated, and they're out of town, and, and the garage is good, and they'd want to sell the property that way.
So what would happen if, if the city went in and abated the situation like that, and we tore the house down, and let the other, the garage structure?
And the city would do it at minimal cost to us, because most of the time we don't recoup that, so we would, the city would not go tear a garage down if there was no condition.
Does that mean that the city would be on the hook to have to put a structure back up, or we would be not in compliance in our own title if we tore the other structure down?
If we were the owner of the property, yes.
But if we weren't?
Correct.
But we tore it down because we were abating it? How could we force the property?
Them to rebuild.
We tore it down, now you have to rebuild it.
Yeah.
But it, we can't do that.
I, I have a, I have a resident that called me that has a piece of property that there used to be, I believe there used to be a small garage on there. Well, they tore it down, but it isn't, the property is not a hundred and twenty-five foot deep. It's about twenty-five foot wide, and maybe, maybe seventy foot deep, or eighty foot deep. But he wanted to put a garage there, he just, he bought the property, there's nothing he can do with that property. The only thing he could do there was to put a garage. He couldn't build a house because it's not big enough.
That would have been his responsibility then, to know what that ordinance said before he bought the property with the sole purpose of putting a garage on it.
He'd bought the property a long time ago, several years ago, thinking he could build a garage there for stories. And, but anyway, the question was, the question would be, what can he do with that property?
It's a substandard lot at that point.
Yeah.
The variance for setbacks, possibly, I don't know, I'd have to, but that is the requirement. If the lot is unusual in some way, then they have the ability to do it.
But under this ordinance, he couldn't do anything.
Correct.
He'd have to leave it there.
Or put a smaller house.
There's no way he could build a house on it.
Well, there's no way he can build a house, then what size garage is he going to put?
You hear?
Anyway, that's just something that came up that, that, that was brought to my attention, that he was wondering where the zoning was going, and I, I told him, I'm not sure what, I, I couldn't answer that for him, but I thought I'd throw that out too. And then I got to reading this where it says you got six months to build a house. I don't know about that, I don't know if people can build a house that fast.
It's got to be permitted, not built.
It's just permitted, yes. For the garage, and they're getting, in that permit, it says that they have to have, meet the requirements for a house. You think that would be enough in regard to the property?
I don't, I, personally, if, DeBary, if it was me, I wouldn't even have the six month, I would just say you don't get a garage without a house. That, that's my stance on it, because I don't know, my biggest concern is if we go forward this, and somebody doesn't build a house in six months.
But I owe this to the, I owe this to the residents, to the constituents that have called me on the phone and asked me about it, and so I threw it, I can throw it out there as an amendment, and we can do whatever we got to do. But it's my, I represent these people down here, and when they call and ask me to do something, that's when I throw out to them, and if it doesn't pass, well then I tell them that it did pass.
Is there any more discussion on the amendment that DeBary has made?
I just have one additional.
Okay.
I have a fear of these substandard lots that are existing, that there'll be a hardship on some of the landowners. I have no problems with the new stuff that people buy, but because they, they're aware, or should be aware, that there, there's this ordinance, but for folks who have sat on these lots for years, and they're, they're sitting there, and they're cleaning them up, and it's kind of a hardship on them, and so I just kind of want to voice that before we vote on that.
I would have to agree with you, Linda, because there's a lot of people that bought properties in his opinion, their future move, and this could affect their future move.
So I don't know what we do with this.
Danielle, can you answer a question for us? How long has it, has this particular portion of this ordinance been in place?
I would have to research, but I know that it, at minimum, since 2014. It could be farther, I just would have to research that to tell you for sure. But that is in current ordinance, that's not something we added or were trying to change, we just left as is. But again, I would have to pull the past versions of the ordinance to actually see when that was changed. I can, actually, I wonder if it has a date in here.
I still feel that this is really infringing on some of the citizens' rights.
Maybe we should have something on substandard lots?
You still have the ability to petition for variances on every municipal code, you just petition through the Board of Adjustments. And as Danielle noted, you know, one of those requirements would be, this lot in particular has these issues, and we are unable to build within the current zoning because of that. So in order for us to maintain or have reasonable use of the property, we need to request this variance. And that's still in place, that continues. That is their resolution for property owners who may have a gas line going through the middle of their property, and they can't build right directly above it, and for other instances. But the principle of having a residential unit in a residential zone is fundamental. Otherwise, you would have commercial uses across Um, otherwise you would have commercial uses across the board. You would have industrial uses across the board. Residential units are there because they are the most restrictive. They are the most restrictive because you are going to have living situations. You're going to have children in close quarters. And so the principles of, of zoning require you to have that. Industrials on the other end, uh, very few limitations. You can essentially do anything in those areas, um, for heavy industrial use. But residential use, when you start eliminating the ability to have a residential unit, you no longer have a residential zone. You have a commercial zone. You have an industrial zone, so, um, sorry.
So I'm going to go backwards just a little bit. I'm reading this. It says that the Planning and Zoning Commission made a motion on June eleventh, twenty nineteen. So coming up on a year to recommend this Title Nineteen proposals to the Rollins City Council. You've been working on it for three years prior to that. So by twenty sixteen, you were already working on this process. You said you did not change this. It was already part of the zoning.
Correct.
So anybody that's purchased a piece of property since twenty sixteen, at least,
Yes.
have been operating under this particular method.
And again, I know for a fact that that has been part of code minimum twenty fourteen. I just don't know previous to that. Um, so current code, that's nineteen thirty. I was just there. Um, I'm sorry, it's nineteen twenty-four and it's still oh five oh. So it was amended. Um, ordinance number oh seven, B twenty fourteen, amended July fifteenth, twenty fourteen. It was originally enacted in nineteen ninety-seven and then...
Actually, it's because it's over here.
Oh.
So, so it would be this amended in two thousand two, right? Because it's right here, six months from date of issuance. So we're talking about this section.
Yes, so, um, it looks like it was amended originally in nineteen eighty-nine through ordinance three B dash ninety-five, amended in nineteen ninety-seven, amended again in two thousand and two, uh, amended in two thousand and fourteen.
That's the whole ordinance or that section of the ordinance?
That section. So nineteen twenty-four, oh five oh, that whole A through, I, I'm not sure, E, or G, I guess. So I don't know. We'd have to, again, go back and look to see specifically what those amendments were in those years. But that's why I know for sure from two thousand fourteen, and I wasn't a part of that amendment, but I remember looking at that and that being something brought up at that time as well.
That's most sound.
May I have to qua- uh, clarify what I'm hearing then? So this would, I'm not, I'm not speaking particularly on the amendment, but about the motion generally. So what I am hearing is that with these substandard sized lots, then they, they, it isn't necessarily a hardship because then they can go to the Board of Adjustments and inquire about a variance then. So that would answer my question and my, my reserve of, of why some of these, these folks maybe could be helped by that knowledge or something. Okay. Thank you for that.
Any other questions in regards to the motion that DeVary Martinez has made?
So we're voting on his motion first, right?
Need to clarify that statement.
Okay, online voting is closed and the motion carries with Mayor Nicholson, Councilmember Espinoza, Martinez, and Smith voting yes, and Councilmembers Durst, Wells, and Vice Mayor Sanger voting no.
So, so it passed for the one year?
Okay, correct. Got that.
So now we'll move back to the original motion. Is that correct?
Correct.
Go on, the original motion with the amendment added to it.
No, we just, we just agreed.
It was the amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
We're done.
We don't do the third reading?
Yeah.
That was the third.
That was the third reading with the amendment.
I don't know what's going on. I'll make the change.
Going back to the underlying motion, but because the amendment passed, it passed the...
The main motion plus the amendment, two of them.
Okay. I just know I'll make the change.
Did you get that on Councilman Martinez? No, I didn't. So it, it, it passed with your motion extending it from six months to twelve months. Okay, pass?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, folks. All right. Now we'll move on down to item B, the second reading of many Rollins, Municipal Code Title Two Point Two O, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Um, so again, these are just the changes to...
Mr. Mayor? I move to approve on second reading and wait the reading of the ordinance in many Rollins Municipal Code Title Two Point Two O, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, will you second?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilman Sanger, second step. Now you.
Sorry about that. Um, these are just to reflect the bylaw amendments that were previously passed. There's been no changes from the first reading, but if you guys have questions, let me know.
I do want a clarification. I suppose it's on here, but I'm not technical tonight. The amendment really is to have meetings not on a set timeframe, but when needed, correct? And you did take out the other requirement that we had originally talked about, correct? Um, there was another, um, I thought we had talked about taking that out.
The, trying to remember. So it is to, the meetings are still set for the second Tuesday of each month. However, if there's no business, then we don't, we need to have minimum one meeting per quarter. So if I have no business being presented, then they can not have that meeting so long as they meet the minimum quarterly meeting. But if there is business, it's still scheduled, um, that day. So hopefully that answers the first part of your question. And then the second part, do you remember?
And it has something to do with, um, representatives, representatives and members or...
I, I don't recall, to be honest. I'm sorry. Do you remember anything?
I think we took that out and...
And what, it may have been part of the bylaws, which were different than the actual ordinance. Um, because I did the bylaws first, just to make sure that things passed before I amended the ordinance.
Correct. And that's what we passed?
Yes.
Okay, this is, thank you. Now I clear.
Any more questions for Danielle? Okay. Martha, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yays.
Thank you, guys.
Now we'll move on down to new business. Uh, first item is the approval of payroll. Councilman Sanger?
I move to approve March fifteenth, twenty twenty through March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty payroll register for two hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second? Councilman Espinoza, second on that. Is there, um, any discussion with the motion that was made?
None.
If there's no discussion, Martha, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yays.
Thank you, Martha. Now we'll move on down to approval of accounts payable. Councilwoman Smith?
I move to approve the accounts payable register for the period of March fourteenth, two thousand, oh, twenty twenty, April second, twenty twenty, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents.
I'll second that. Councilwoman Wells, reach to it, DeVary. Any discussion in regards to motion that was made?
None.
Martha, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yays.
Okay. We'll move on down to item C, a resolution. Carbon County Districts Council grant application for Latino Heritage Celebration. Councilwoman Esp- Councilman Espinoza?
Yeah, I'd like DeVary to make the motion on that one.
I would, too, DeVary.
DeVary, would you like to make the first motion on that?
I would. I would, I would make the, make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Councilman Smith, second step?
Do you have any questions?
Get your grant, have your festival list due this week.
I'm just so excited because not only did we apply for that cultural arts, which was a zoo and a half, we also got some money from Sinclair to do banners downtown. So they'll be up the first part of July, all through the festival. So a month and a half of Latino Heritage Celebration banners and we're starting to roll. We're having a pretty good time with this. So we've got some investors as far as people in the community that want to help us. I think this will be great.
Any other questions for Patty?
No, you're done.
Thank you for your hard work, Patty.
Martha, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yays.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you. The next one's mine, too.
Okay.
Thanks.
We'll move on down to a resolution. Carbon County School District Number One Recreation Board Grant for a new elliptical exercise machine. Can I get a motion?
Mayor?
Councilman Sanger?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing submission of a Carbon County School District Number One Recreation Board Grant in the amount of five thousand, six hundred dollars for the purchase of an elliptical exercise machine.
Councilwoman Wells, second step? Is there any questions for Patty?
This is an amazing piece of new equipment. It's not just an elliptical. It is a trainer. It will be so amazing in that new, clean, shiny room.
Does it have a voice that yells at you?
Nobody has this little hookup. You can hook up to your phone and do things that way, too.
That's better.
Of course, everything does. Everything has an app, so.
We had one that yelled at you. It wasn't fun. No questions?
If there's no questions for Patty, then Martha, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yays.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, Patty.
Now we'll move on down to a resolution. Approve the twenty twenty annual cleanup campaign. Can you motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Smith?
Okay, I move to approve the resolution for the twenty twenty annual cleanup campaign. Authorize a fee waiver of landfill fees for residential users disposing of construction and demolition, C and D waste in the city of Rollins, Carbon County, Wyoming, Monday to Sunday, June first, twenty twenty through June seventh, twenty twenty.
Okay.
I'll go first and second. Danielle, one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, if, if there was a second on that motion, uh, well, I had a, I had a call in regard to the cleanup. They were, they were wondering why we use, uh, the month of June, which is pretty close to the middle of our summer, instead of using, um, May, which is the beginning of, uh, of our warm weather.
Okay.
Is there, is there a reason why we picked June?
Well, let's ask Danielle that.
So that is the time that a lot of times we do our community cleanup. We do our downtown cleanup, so we try to coincide with that. It also gives our, that's just kind of historically we've done it the first week, so we try to keep it the same so that people know when to expect it.
Did you hear that, DeVary?
Uh, I didn't hear that, but that was a question that was asked by somebody that called, called me and then asked me about it and I had no answer for it. I said they probably had a reason why they picked June. Uh, I kind of understood what she was saying, too, because, uh, a lot of people clean their yards in the spring with, uh, and, and so that would be a time when they would want to haul their stuff to the landfill.
Right. So basically Danielle said, you know, historically it's always been that first week in June and just trying to stay with that same pattern because most people always remember that same, same week.
It also fits with the other cleanups going around town.
Okay, well, I understand that, but I'm just saying that most people here will clean their properties in the spring when the, when the weather's nicer and have their property cleaned for the summer. They're, they're hauling a lot of grass and, and, and leaves and things of that nature.
Which is free.
But anyways, that's okay. I just wanted to mention that. All right. Thank you, DeVary.
I have a perspective.
Councilwoman, second, right?
If I may. Usually people spend a lot of time in May cleaning up their yards and that's the month they clean everything up and then they wait for the landfill and then we take it all out. I know, and it sometimes snows in May and rains really bad. So that's, that's why I think they picked June.
Or you're going to stay at home, or it could go either way.
The, the other plus side staffing wise is we usually, not always, have a seasonal and that is a really busy week for us. So that seasonal makes a world of difference, so.
Staff wise.
Yes.
Any other questions for Danielle?
None.
Martha, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yays.
Thank you, Martha. Now we'll move on down to a bid award, the twenty twenty manhole project. Can I get a motion?
I move to award the twenty twenty manhole project base bid and all add alternate to Viper Underground in the amount of two hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay, Councilwoman Ross, uh, first and Councilwoman Espinoza, second. Okay? Discussion for Danielle?
So I guess I'll just explain a little bit. Um, we did receive two bids. We did bid this out as a base bid and add alternate. The reason being is we weren't entirely sure, um, where the prices were going to come in and what the budget would look like. Uh, we can't afford to do all of these. This will put us in a really good position with our manholes, um, so that we don't have issues with them either falling apart. We are also adding a couple new ones. The purpose of that being, we have some areas in town, we do preventative cleaning. Um, it's twenty percent every year so that every sewer is getting hit on a five-year basis minimum, um, sometimes more depending on the condition. And we have some areas where our sewer jet does not reach and this would allow us to properly maintain and clean those sewers. Um, so we are wanting to move forward with this project. We do have the funding for it, um, and it would hopefully be completed. We would like to finish up our twenty nineteen water project with Viper and then go into this project and get it done this year.
Okay. Any questions for Danielle?
Oh, I wanted to tell you, it does have a two-year warranty on the asphalt that's done afterwards, which was new a couple of years ago. We tried it and it was successful. So just wanted to make sure you guys knew that as well.
All right. I guess that's what you'd want to be able to have.
Yes.
There's no other questions for Danielle? Martha, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yays.
All right, thank you. We'll move on down to the approval of specific purpose tax, six penny Edinburgh and Walnut Streets design work. Can I get a motion?
Mayor?
Councilman Sanger?
I move to authorize staff to begin design work on both Edinburgh Street and Walnut Street as the priority projects for the specific purpose, uh, purpose tax, six penny tax, funding in an effort to be ready to bid the projects once funding is available.
Second?
Um, so this is just a follow-up agenda item. We had a work session, a couple work sessions ago. My days are flaring. And we had talked about the six penny projects. Um, the funding is starting to come. I don't know that we've received it yet, but they've got some funding. So we wanted to begin the design work on these. These are, are two top priorities. Um, anybody that drives these streets can tell you they are crumbling, um, and falling apart very bad. So we are hoping if we can get this design part moving forward, that once the funding's available, we can proceed and we're ready to go. Um, this will probably be our approach with additional projects moving forward, but as I said, these are the first two. but as I said, these are the first two priorities.
I'm so happy about this.
I'm really excited.
Any other questions for Danielle?
None.
Marla would open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yays.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Now we'll go, um, I have nine executive session, can I get a motion? Councilwoman Smith?
Okay, I move that we go and take executive session at eight nineteen P M pursuant to exec-, pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen four, four oh five two, to consider the appointment, employment, right to practice or disservice level of public officer, professional person or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person or officer, unless the employee, professional person or officer requests a public hearing. The governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during examination of the witness, any or all other witnesses in the matter being investigated. While in the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate, deliberate on its decision in executive session. Nine, consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law.
I take a minute for the executive.
Okay.
Councilwoman DeVary Martinez, second? Any discussion in regards to our motion that was made? Is that Marla would open online voting?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yays.
We are, any other questions?